Good afternoon, everyone. This is the November 21st, 2024 meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 Extending Certain COVID Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided far in the order. A reminder, people who'd like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number (508) 945-4410, conference ID 111-983-832-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link on the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. The procedural steps are as follows. We do a roll call of all board members. Do we do that now? Do we do that first? Pull the blank. And then we ask if any citizens on the board, anybody participating on the call, just give your name and your last four digits of the phone number for identification purposes. The hearing notice is read by staff. Sarah Clark, on my right, you or your representative will present the appeal or application. Anyone in favor of the appeal or application may speak. There's a five-minute time limit, and there'll be a clock up there that we follow religiously. Then I will read or summarize all the letters that we receive. Anyone against the appeal or application may speak for up to five minutes. Then the applicant can rebut that testimony. Board members will direct any questions to anyone present if they wish. Once we get all our further information, we will close the public hearing. Once we close the hearing, there'll be no further conversations with anybody that is not on the board unless and until somebody from the board asks a specific question to somebody that's been involved with the application. Other than that, there is no back and forth once the public hearing is closed. Then we, once we close the public hearing, then we deliberate. Usually, we vote on the application. All votes are taken by roll call. At the end of the meeting, we will close with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. I would ask you to please shut off all devices that make any noise whatsoever. Our members are David Veach, Edward Acton, David Nixon, Paul Semple, Lee Hovey, Steve DeBoer, and Virginia Fenwick. Voting today are Virginia Fenwick, Steve DeBoer, Paul Semple, David Nixon, and David Veach. And so you need to get four out of five votes to prevail. That's a supermajority. That's the rule in Massachusetts. And with that, I think we are going to go to a roll call of all board members to authorize this form of meeting. Virginia?
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
Stephen DeBoer, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Ed Acton, approve.
And David H. Veach, I approve.
And Randy Podash, I approve as well. Paul, do we have any?
Yes, we have minutes of October 24, 2024. I'll move to approve those minutes as published.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. And that ought to do it. First application, Sarah, is 24-116 Minglewood Homes. I believe this is going to be a request for a continuance.
Application number 24-116, Minglewood Homes, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Shatta, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 13 Captain Knoll's Way, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 11C Block 5, Lot H13. The applicant seeks to construct an elevated stairway, landings, and kayak rack under Section 4A 3A of the protective bylaw. The lot contains 57,500 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, Bill Litchfield. The chair's prescience is correct. We are seeking a continuance. Sarah advised me that January 23rd would be the appropriate date. I believe I already signed the extension document, and if I haven't, I will. We are going to be revising the plans and need time to do that and to get them back to you for a hearing, so we would ask for a continuance.
I'll move to grant the request to continue us to January 23, 2025.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes. Yes.
All votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you next time. Okay, next application is 37 Juniper Lane West, 24-119.
Application number 24-119, Bridget Makes, care of Matthew Cole, P.O. Box 1858, Northeastham, Mass. 02651. Owner of property located at 37 Juniper Lane West, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 4D Block 40, Lot M5. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition and deck. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 12.4 feet from the southerly of butter. The proposed addition will comply with all dimensional requirements of the bylaw. The proposed deck will be nonconforming in that it will be located 12.3 feet from the southerly of butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 938 square feet, 6.2%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,276 square feet, 14.99%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it has 90.6 feet of frontage where 100 feet is required and contains 15,181 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome. You could just state your name.
Great, thank you. Matthew Cole from Cape Esau Shits for the applicant. With me today is Stephanie Sequin from Reiner &amp; Wilcox. So I think Sarah said it all. We are seeking to make improvements to this property. We are representing Bridget Makes, who has been a long-term holder of this property. She's owned it since 1983, and, you know, it's in an R20 district. The property and the structure are nonconforming, so I'll turn it over to Stephanie to walk through the plan and what we're seeking to do.
Hi, good afternoon. Stephanie Sequin with Reiner &amp; Wilcox. And yes, the existing lot is nonconforming due to the lot size being less than 20,000 square feet and the frontage being less than 100 feet. The existing building that we've located conforms to all setbacks with the exception of the side yard setback on the south. The corner of the building is 12.3 feet from the property line where the requirement is 15 feet. There's also, I want to make a little correction in what I believe Sarah read. If you look in, on the plan, the dashed line is the existing deck that is going to be removed, and the existing deck ties into the building at that southerly corner. So the existing building and the deck are both 12.3 feet from the property line. The building's going to stay, the deck is going to be removed, and the addition is going in place of a portion of that existing deck. The corners of the proposed addition are just over 15 feet from the property line. So the addition was designed specifically so that it met the minimum setback requirements from the property line. What will remain within that 15-foot setback is the existing deck. I'm sorry, the existing building. So just one little clarification there. Otherwise, the proposed addition complies with the front yard setback, the butter setback to the north, and the rear lot line setback, and it has been designed to stay under, just under, the 15% building coverage that's allowed. The proposed building coverage is 14.99%. It's just a single-story building. I've got the existing and proposed height calculations. It's well under, the existing height is 17 feet, and the proposed height is 16 feet, so it's well under the 30-feet maximum that's allowed. And I think the only other thing I will mention there is, this is an existing two-bedroom house. It will remain a two-bedroom house. The existing septic system is located in the backyard, and the proposed addition is encroaching on those components, so we have designed a replacement system that meets the setback requirements from the lot lines and from the proposed addition. So we're all set as far as the septic goes. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Did you go through the criteria, or did I just, did I just miss that? Because we were actually talking, just so you know, our lists were rearranged, and so there was a question, and nothing to do with you.
Okay.
So, going back, did you go through the criteria? I apologize.
No. Would you like me to walk through the special permit criteria?
You need to. Yes, thank you.
Great. Are you? Yeah, thank you. So adequacy of the site, the single-family use is a standard permitted use in the zone. Care was taken to design to conform to all setbacks, maintain the single-story low nature of the structure, and maintain good buffers around all sides of the addition from the street neighboring properties. Suitability of the site, the site is in the R20 zone where the single-family use is a standard permitted use. Impact on traffic flow and safety, again, there's no change in use here. There is no impact to traffic flow and safety anticipated. Impact on neighbor and visual character, the single-story massing of the house is maintained. The improvements to the structure expand upon the charming Cape Cod shingle-style aesthetic of the home, consistent with the neighborhood. Adequacy and method of sewage disposal, source in water and drainage. Town waters continue to service this home. A new and improved septic system is to be installed, as is additional drainage. Adequacy of utilities and public services, again, no change. Noise and litter, proposed structure will not add to noise or litter. Compatibility of proposed use with the surrounding land and uses, again, single-story massing of the house is maintained. The improvements expand upon the character that is present now and stays very consistent with what's there in the neighborhood. Impact on the natural environment, the property is located outside of wetlands and water bodies. Impacts are mitigated by providing subsurface drainage.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. Judith Giorgio, our health agent, tells us on 11/19/2024 that she has seen the plans to renovate and add in addition to the property. It appears that the dwelling will maintain the existing two-bedroom layout. A site plan showing the location of the septic tank and leaching area in relation to the addition is required. Okay, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board. Virginia Fenwick.
Stephanie, could you just confirm the height? I think you said 16.
I did. I was reading, I realize now, I was reading the figures from the grade plane. The height, the existing, is 17.5, and the proposed is 18.4. It's getting, it's not getting any taller, the grade plane is just getting lower.
Okay, yeah, I, when you said 16, I thought you meant 18. I just wanted to get that clarified for the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Virginia Fenwick? No?
No more questions.
Okay, just questions? Steve?
I have no questions.
Just questions?
I have no questions.
Paul?
No questions.
No questions.
Ed?
No questions.
And nor do I.
Okay, nor do I. Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
Ginny.
Steve?
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All right, very good. So deliberations. Dave Veach.
Well, I certainly, this is, meets our criteria. It's not substantially more detrimental. I think it's a real improvement. It's not a huge change. I think it works well from the existing house and property, and it's nice to see that in many respects, so I will be supporting it.
And Ed?
Yeah, it meets our special permit criteria. I don't have any concerns, and it seems it will fit in well the neighborhood.
And David Nixon?
I agree with the previous two gentlemen.
Okay, Paul?
I agree. You've seen a lot of changes in Juniper Lane West towards the pond. A number of revisions to houses at 91 to 94 and so forth. You're at 14.99 in terms of coverage. I assume you're going to be careful about not exceeding that 15.
Yep, very careful.
Okay. I have no other questions about it, and I think it meets our criteria, so I'll vote in favor.
Okay, Lee?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think it's a very thoughtful and appropriate renovation of a home, and even though it is maxing out the building coverage almost, I, it's an appropriate structure. It's one story, and I think it's going to give the homeowner some, some good new space.
And Steve, deliberations?
Yeah, I was concerned about the intensification and going to, you know, a hundredth of a point away from the maximum, but I don't think it's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. It is on one story. It's not going to be, you know, something that's looming over the road. There are two, at least two large houses across the street from this one, I think, that are fairly large. I think it's a nice project.
And Virginia Fenwick?
I agree with all my colleagues. I think the reason you're maxing out is because you're starting with such a small home, so I think that it makes, what you have proposed makes a lot of sense, and I really love how you have kept the house and you are really nicely incorporating the addition, so I think it's very well done, and I would support it. It meets our criteria.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't have anything to add. So, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I guess the question is conditions and the question of construction activity during the summertime period. What are your thoughts about when you'll be beginning work and how it will go?
We hope to begin as soon as able, as we are able to, and be done before the summer.
All right. There's not an awful lot of traffic on that road, but are you able to keep all construction vehicles and so forth on-site?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure that we see a need for imposing the full conditions in this situation, so I would be inclined to say I would approve, I would move to approve the application with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. I don't think we see any need for additional restrictions.
Does anybody see any need for additional restrictions? No? Seeing none, so, okay.
So I move approval on that basis.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
And it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along to application 24-117, 24 North Skyline Drive.
Application number 24-117, Chris and Christine Duval, care of SV Design LLC, 693 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 24 North Skyline Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 11H Block 17, Lot H63. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 3,032 square feet, 8.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,399 square feet, 9.9%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 34,100 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5, via the protective bylaw.
Welcome. Just please state your name.
Sure thing. Paul Muldoon from SV Design, here representing the Duville family. Chris Duville is in the audience here, and their project at 24 North Skyline Drive.
Okay.
As Sarah mentioned, we're an undersized lot. We're an R60 zone, and we have 34,000, a little over 34,000 square feet where 60,000 is required. Our addition is on the rear of the elevation, the rear yard, one-story addition with some unfinished foundation space below. We're adding a bedroom and a bathroom off the back of the house. You can see here on the site plan, the northernmost point of the house is a garage, and that projects out into the rear yard, and our new addition is generally mimicking that shape, creating an outdoor space between these two forms. The lot itself at 34,000 square feet gives us a pretty good opportunity to place this addition with great distance to the side yard setbacks. We're about 68 feet, a little over 68 feet to the southern setback. We are 48 feet to the northern setback and a little bit less when we account for mechanical The building coverage is increasing. Our addition on the first floor level is 363 square feet, bringing our total building coverage up to 9.9%. The addition itself, the materials, will match the main house as much as we can. The soffit and fascia details will wrap around the structure, connecting into the existing structure, so it will be fully, there'll be continuity in the elevations. With that, I'm happy to go through the criteria.
Please do.
Adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the proposed use. No change to the use, a single-family residential structure, and again, we're going to 9.9% where 10% is the maximum. Suitability of the site for the proposed use, no change in use, single-family residence in an R60 zone. Impact on traffic flow and safety, we don't believe there is any change in the traffic flow and safety of this particular project. Impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. As a one-story structure to the rear of the property, we don't expect any views or vistas from neighboring properties or interrupted at all, and from an architectural standpoint, integrating the new design into the existing architecture means that there is some continuity in what we're doing here. Adequacy in the method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. Drainage will be kept on-site, and the sewage system, we do have a five-bedroom design, and there's a note from Judy in the comments about completing the five-bedroom system, so we're only adding that one bedroom to max out our five-bedroom allotment. Adequacy of utilities and public services, there's no change, no upgrade. Noise and litter, no addition to noise or litter created by the modest addition. Compatibility of the proposed use of the surrounding land uses, it's a single-family residential neighborhood. And no impact on natural environment and no visual impact on the neighborhood and town visual character of any formal business establishment.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure thing.
Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the four correspondences that we have. First one is from Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She tells us on 11/19/2024 that she reviewed the plan to renovate and add in addition to this property. The dwelling is connected to a shared alternative septic system and was allotted sewage flow by deed and covenant for five bedrooms. The addition of a bedroom at this time is allowed by right. I have no objections. Then we have a note from Rick and Maggie Ferry of 202 North Skyline Drive. They tell us on November 19, 2024, that they're writing to express their full support for the proposed addition by Chris and Christine Duval. We are located directly behind the property, and it will likely be the most impacted by the expansion and construction. We understand and appreciate their desire to have an extra room for their family and have no issues or concerns whatsoever. Then we have a note from Kevin Downey on 230 North Skyline Drive. They, he tells us on November 7, 2024, that as an interested party, due to shared septic with the property located at 24 North Skyline Drive, and as it pertains to application 24-117 regarding a special permit for construction to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling, change a conforming dwelling, my wife Christine and I support the approval of the special permit. Then we have a note from John and Marcy Pucker from 252 North Skyline Drive on November 5, 2024, writing to tell us that they support their neighbor's desire to add in addition to their home at 24 North Skyline Drive, and they believe as in a butter, the proposed addition is complementary to their home as well as an asset to the neighborhood, and they tell us not to hesitate to let them know if we have any questions, which we might, but I don't think so. All right. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, questions from the board. David Veach, just questions.
I have no questions.
Ed?
No questions.
David?
I have no questions.
No questions.
I have no questions.
No questions.
All right, nor do I. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes. Dave Veach seconds and votes, uh, yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Yeah, very good. Um, deliberations. Ginny?
Meets all of our criteria, um, in my opinion. Uh, it, it's a beautiful property, and the addition makes complete sense, so I would support it.
All right, Steve, we'll just go right around.
Yeah, I was concerned at first when I saw five bedrooms, but it appears that it's permitted for that. I have no issues. It looks like a nice project.
Lee?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. Um, meets our criteria, and it will not be detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Paul?
I agree, it meets the criteria, and it has the support of, uh, the three neighbors who are surrounding in the back area there. So it seems to me they're the ones most important, impacted here. So I, I think it meets our criteria, and I will approve it.
And David Nixon?
Meets all our criteria.
And Ed Acton?
Uh, agree with, uh, my colleagues.
And David Veach?
And I agree with all previous.
As do I. It's, um, a beautiful house, and, uh, a lot of times when we see big getting bigger, you know, we, we pause, but this doesn't, uh, fall into that category.
Thank you.
And, uh, with that, any, uh, any conditions, Paul?
Well, I guess the question is, what's your plan in terms of construction?
As soon as possible. And I do believe we can keep all of the construction, uh, debris and, and trucks on the site.
All right. Um, this neighborhood is a little bit more crowded. Uh, do you see any need for restriction on building during the summer months?
I, I suspect that would be fully enclosed by the summer months.
Okay. Um, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction, uh, vehicles and, uh, let me see if I can find that. That, uh, all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained onsite or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along today. And our next application is going to be ninety-five West Pond Road, twenty-four dash one eighteen.
Application number twenty-four dash one eighteen, Wendy Koblish, Care of SV Design LLC, six ninety-three Main Street, Chatham, Mass. zero-two-six-three-three. Owner of property located at ninety-five West Pond Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, six G, block one, lot M-ten. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration under the second except clause of section six of Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is nine hundred and ninety-eight square feet, nine point one percent, and the proposed building coverage is one thousand six hundred forty-four square feet, fourteen point nine-five percent, or fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming in that it contains eleven thousand square feet, where thirty thousand square feet is required in the R-thirty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five via protective by law.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Paul Muldoon, SV Design, here representing Sue Young and Wendy Koblish, and their project at ninety-five West Pond Road. Um, as Sarah mentioned, we're in an R-thirty zone here, and we have a small lot. So we've got eleven thousand square feet to work with, where thirty thousand square feet is required. Um, our, our addition is a one-story addition, uh, connecting to the main house with a, a, a simple connector, a mudroom connector, and a, um, series of spaces, uh, on the, the bulk of the addition. Um, we are including a ramp that may or may not be built right away, uh, to get up to the, um, the now main entry in the, in the mudroom space. Um, the lot coverage is the main reason we're here. We're, we're at nine point one percent, going to fourteen point nine-five, um, but still underneath the fifteen percent maximum. Uh, the addition itself, the, the details, the materials, uh, windows, colors, all that will be in coordination with the existing house. So we feel like it's going to fit into the neighborhood fairly well. Uh, we are, um, compliant by way of setbacks, um, and, um, I think that's it. Um, I do, uh, have the criteria?
Please.
Great. Uh, adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the proposed use. It is a single-family, uh, use in a single-family neighborhood in the R-thirty zone. Um, again, we do have, uh, dimensionally conforming side yard setbacks here to the proposed structures. Uh, suitability of the site for the proposed use, no change in use, single-family, uh, residents, um, all the way through. Uh, impact on traffic flow and safety, I don't believe there'll be any impact on the traffic flow and safety. We'll still have plenty of parking on this particular property. Um, impact on the neighboring visual character, including, uh, views and vistas. As a one-story addition, it, it's fairly low, uh, slung, and we do feel like this, this small, uh, gable end facing the street provides some character to the, to the property and to the neighborhood. Uh, adequacy of the method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, um, there's no change in sewage flow, and, uh, we, we've had a good discussion with Judy this morning to, um, talk about her original, uh, review of the project and, uh, uh, come up with the, um, conclusion that we still only have three bedrooms. Um, adequacy of utilities and other public services, uh, no upgrade to electrical service is needed, and water flow will, um, will remain the same. Uh, noise and litter, uh, no additional noise or litter will be created by this modest addition. Um, compatibility of the proposed use with the surrounding land uses, um, again, single-family, uh, neighborhood, single-family residential use. Uh, there'll be no impact on, uh, natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, uh, water, uh, water bodies. Um, and we don't believe there'll be any visual impact on the neighborhood, uh, as it pertains to town visual character of any formula business establishments.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read, uh, Judith Giorgio, our health agent's note from November nineteenth twenty twenty-four. I have reviewed the plan to add an addition to this property. The addition is concerning in that it'll be, it will allow for privacy in the new wing, which resembles a bedroom suite. The plans must be revised to meet the requirement of the Board of Health. Six-foot cased openings on both sides of the mudroom, uh, will be required. Additionally, floor plans of the second floor to confirm existing bedroom numbers are needed for review. Um, did you want to, um, just elaborate on what your understanding is now?
She mentioned she was going to send an, an updated, uh, note to, to the board. Um, no? Uh, we, we talked about, uh, entering the mudroom, and on the right-hand side, creating a six-foot opening there, as that is part of the new construction, and keeping a partial height wall there, so that we, we have a wide opening into the new space. Uh, the four-foot opening that's into the existing hallway is, is generally maxed out by the way the interior of the hallway works. Um, this, this was my discussion with her, and she seemed to agree.
Okay. Do you have any comments on that, um, Mr. Briggs, our building commissioner?
Whatever makes Judy happy, I'm okay with.
Okay. Tell her that.
We did meet this morning, and she mentioned that she'd be sending over an updated, uh, note to the board.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay. Um, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application, or has a specific question? Seeing none, uh, questions from the board. Virginia Fenwick?
Uh, my only question was that bathroom, or me, bedroom situation. So, we're okay with, you say it's, the, uh, information's coming to us, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, no other questions?
Okay, Steve, questions?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was hoping you could, or we're going to elaborate on, um, what, um, what the Board of Health said. Cause it, the floor plan is a bit curious, in that the dining room is on the complete opposite end of the house, as the kitchen is. So, and you have to walk through a hallway and a mudroom and everything else to get to it. So it does look a little suspicious.
Sure.
Um, but as long as you've talked to Judy about it, then, um, and squared it away with her, then I'm fine. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm confident in my discussion with Judy.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lee?
I, I had the same concern, but I'm gonna let Judy handle that one. And Paul?
I have no questions.
And David Nixon?
No questions.
And Ed?
Uh, no questions.
And David Veach?
Um, I just noticed, seeing, uh, Paul, that there's a new generator, and that meets the, uh, setback, sideline setback requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, okay, I, I don't have any questions either. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All right, very good. Deliberations. Uh, Virginia Fenwick?
Uh, I, um, I think that even though they're maxing out their number, um, it's an attractive addition. And, I, I mean, they're really adding a lot in that addition. A mudroom, a family room, a bathroom, a laundry room. Uh, and I think that even though it's a neighborhood of smaller lots and smaller homes, um, it's an attractive, um, and useful addition. So I, um, do not think that it's substantially more detrimental.
Okay, Steve?
I agree with, with Ginny. Everything that she said, I think it is a nice addition. And, um, it'll, um, you know, it'll add a little character to the house.
Okay, and Lee?
I agree as well. Um, it's, it's maxing out, but it's still very appropriate for the neighborhood. So it meets the cr, criteria.
And Paul?
Yes, I think it gives a good benefit to, uh, the use of the house, and it's, it's very appropriate. Uh, it certainly meets our criteria. It's nice to see a neighborhood that looks affordable.
And David Nixon?
Yeah, two things, uh, that come to mind for myself. Number one, uh, I'm glad you resisted, or they resisted, the urge to go to two stories.
Agreed.
I think that would have, um, that would have been detrimental, at least to me.
Absolutely.
And secondly, and I understand because, uh, I think as Ms. Fenwick pointed out, it's a small lot, uh, going up to fourteen point nine-five, or whatever it is, uh, I hope you know, we don't want to see you if you go over the fifteen and you need something.
Understood.
Fix it.
These dimensions, or quarter-board dimensions, we'll be absolutely sure.
Okay, thank you.
Here or lower.
Okay, and Ed, Ed Acton?
Uh, it looks fine to me, uh, meets our criteria, so, uh, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with all previous.
Okay, um, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think in this situation, given the, uh, congestion in the area, that the conditions may be appropriate. So I would move that, uh, all construction activity and vehicles be contained onsite or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and constriction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
David Nixon?
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
Steve DeBoer votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Take care.
Next, we have twenty-four dash one twenty, Cannon Hill Investment Properties, three-twenty-five Witter Road, with attorney William F. Riley Esquire. Okay.
Application number twenty-four dash one twenty, Cannon Hill Investment Properties LLC, Care of William F. Riley Esquire, Peel Box seven oh-seven, Chatham, Mass. zero-two-six-three-three. Owner of property located at three-twenty-five Witter Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, thirteen K, block seven, lot W-ten. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of an addition, or of a deck. Uh, the existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located twenty-seven feet from the coastal conservancy district. The proposed deck will be non-conforming, and that it will be located thirty-two feet from the coastal conservancy district, where a fifty-foot setback is required. The lot contains fifty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven square feet, where forty thousand square feet is required in the R-fourty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five via protective by law.
Mr. Riley, welcome. Nice to see you.
Good afternoon, and I was thrilled to see you guys just approve fourteen point nine percent, point nine-five percent building coverage. So I'll be in next week with one fourteen point nine-six, so.
It'll never, it never happened for you, Mr. Riley.
We, we liked that applicant, Mr. Riley, so.
The, uh, well, good afternoon. I'm representing the Pulserford family here, and they, uh, they had a construction project where they enclosed, uh, a covered porch, and there was apparently some miscommunication between the property owner and the, uh, and the contractor. Initially, uh, they were just gonna do a little gate at the front, and then, uh, they installed, uh, folding windows that extend out towards the, uh, outside the building. So they needed space outside the building so they could fold it, open the doors. So that's why we're here, seeking a four-foot, ten-inch, uh, deck on the front. It does, uh, it's non-conforming, it's increasing the non-conformity because it's four feet, ten inches closer to the, the, uh, conservancy district than the existing building. Uh, but, uh, you know, it, it adds no mass or building coverage to the building. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, it, it uses a wire, uh, for ballusters, so that there's no, there's literally no mass to the, to the, uh, the structure at all. So, and, uh, it doesn't involve any excavation on the property because it's being supported by cantilevers. So another, oh, I, all right. So if you, give me the side view. There you go. All right, so you see the cantilever on, on the, on the left-hand side there. That supports it, so there'll be no excavation either. So, we think that this is as modest, uh, renovation addition as you can have. Uh, but it will provide the family with, uh, outdoor space as a part of their, um, patio area, the enclosed patio area. So we think it's very reasonable. I'm happy to run through the criteria if you think that's appropriate.
Just the ones that are particularly relevant to this application?
Okay, so I think, uh, adequacy of the size of the site, in terms of, uh, size of the proposed use, and that, uh, in that criteria, they specifically mentioned, uh, building coverage and setbacks. And there is a, uh, very minor further encroachment into the setback, but there's no increase in building coverage. So we think it's very reasonable. Compatibility of the size of the structure, we're not increasing the size of the structure. Increase in non-conforming nature, it is going to be four feet, ten inches closer to the conservancy district. Uh, but if you've been to the site, you know that there's no, it's not going to have any effect on the conservancy district itself, uh, because it's a deck, rain falls through it, you know, it won't, so it won't increase any runoff or anything. Uh, suitability of the site, okay, there's no excavation because we're cantilevering it. So we think that, uh, you know, the site is suitable for the proposed work. The, we don't think that, first of all, it's on the backside of the house, so we don't think it has any impact at all on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, or streetscape. Uh, it's compatible, single-family use, compatible with all the neighboring uses. Uh, and then I think, uh, the balance of the conditions really aren't applicable, except we will say no increase in noise and litter.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand. Nobody's here? And so I will read the one correspondence. I thought there'd be one from conservation, and I just learned that there isn't one because you're not disturbing the land. So, um, that's interesting. Um, other than that, we have a note from Judith Giorgio on November nineteenth twenty twenty-four. She tells us very briefly that she has no concerns regarding the proposed deck at this property. The end. Um, it does list that there's a conservation note. Um, oh, I guess there is one, but, um, basically, you didn't have to go there.
Right.
So, there's no issue. Okay. And we're told that on October twenty-ninth twenty twenty-four. Okay, very good. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this, um, application? Please indicate. Seeing none, questions from the board. We'll just start with Dave Veach.
I have no questions.
Ed?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm curious. I, I think you presented that this was a mistake by the builder, perhaps?
Misunderstanding.
Misunderstanding. What was the misunderstanding?
The, the initial thought was that the, the, the windows would slide. They didn't realize they were going to be folding out. They didn't realize they were going to be folding out.
So even if they were going to slide, you'd need some type of deck or landing there?
They were just going to put, my understanding was, as a result of my conversation with Sarah this morning, that they were just going to put a railing immediately in front of it.
Okay. And I guess the other question is, you could also have these bi-fold to the inside.
Well, that's not my pay grade, so I got, I got, I got, they fold out, so here we are.
Okay. No other questions.
Okay, David Nixon, questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask the two gentlemen to my left, is there such a thing as a house with too many decks? I mean, is that a possibility? And don't worry, Mr. Riley, it's not a criteria, it's just a question. I'm looking up, I'm looking southeast, north, everywhere.
They enjoy the outside, David. They love the view.
They ain't never been outside, they ain't seen, they didn't dare go outside.
No, no, they're, I tell you, they're, they're tanned, so they go outside so much, they're brown as berries, I tell you, it's a...
I guess.
Okay, all that being said.
I'd say if there's views, you know, put decks. A lot of times, they don't get used.
I especially have seen decks like, you know, roof decks and things that don't get used. And I also, second-floor balconies don't seem to get used as much as people think. So, you know, I don't know if it's too much in the way of decks, but sometimes they get, there are quite a few decks in the house that don't really get used very much. So.
Okay, questions from Paul Semple? Are there any?
Well, I didn't think there was any that was not in Bill's pay grade, but I guess that's not the case. So I have no other questions, thanks.
All right, Lee?
No questions.
And Steve?
Well, the only thing I was going to ask was, you said it was a misunderstanding, but I don't know how you get from sliding windows to folding doors without somebody, you know, not noticing.
All right, well.
But, you know, I, you know, that's, I guess it's water under the bridge, it's already done, so I have no questions.
It was asked and answered, is that? All right.
No questions.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, so deliberations. Paul?
Well, I think clearly it's not going to have any effect on the neighborhood, and I think it follows our criteria, so I will vote in favor.
And Lee?
I agree. At first, we weren't sure where that deck was going, but then I noticed that there were doors there, and it's, you know, it's obvious, it's common sense, and it's borderline safety issue. So I'm glad they're putting some, a deck there.
Right.
Yeah, and Steve?
I think it's a good solution to the problem, you know, cantilevering the deck out, so you're not disturbing anything, the ground underneath is a good idea.
Okay, very good. And Ginny?
Yeah, I agree, two things. The house is already at 27 feet, so that has already, I sort of feel like we've already crossed the, you know, the concern there. And the fact there's no disturbing, you know, to the ground. I think it's, and I think that it's a beautiful view, so they want another deck. I support it.
Okay, and David Veach, deliberations?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good solution. I, the only, I mean, the only thing that I think about, certainly, I mean, this is certainly for summertime use. They have that much glass and that many open doors facing the northwest winter wind. Clearly, that's not the time of year that people are thinking about using this space, but that's not really part of our criteria. It's just a comment. We're asking, I think, so. But no, I think it's not substantially detrimental in any way to the neighborhood. I will support it.
Okay, and Ed, if you were voting?
I think it meets our criteria. I think it's probably a better design than, you know, railings right in front of a slider. I think it'll be fine.
Yep, and David Nixon, last but not least.
Well, I'm very glad you didn't tell us about the homeowner taking the first step, because that would be a long wait.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. It seems to me, what's your plan in terms of construction, Phil, do you know?
I think they want to get going right away.
I think maybe just the all-construction activity and vehicles should be contained on site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner should be sufficient.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure.
Yes, it is. I think more for you than for me.
All right. Now, we have John Goheen, 24-124, 58 Echo Lane, Chatham, Mass., whenever Sarah's ready.
Application number 24-124, John Goheen, care of, John Goheen, 58 Echo Lane, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 58 Echo Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 9K Block 44, Lot H16. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming accessory structure on a non-conforming lot via the creation of habitable space above the existing garage. The existing garage complies with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Master General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of special permit. The building coverage will remain 1,561 square feet, 5% or 10% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and then it contains 31,030 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Goheen, welcome.
Hey, thank you for your time. Yeah, John Goheen, nice to meet you all. I live at 58 Echo Lane. I'm looking to make improvements on the second floor of our existing structure of the garage. There'll be no changes to the exterior of any of the buildings. Simply, I'm looking to get electric up to code, put insulation in, and put drywall up to use a space as an office for working remote.
Yeah, and you've provided us with some written findings. Do you want to just go through the ones that are relevant?
Yeah, happy to. There is, I guess, first of all, no changes to the exterior of the structure that's in place currently, the garage that's there, which is pictured. I will be performing most of the work myself, and it'll be minimal disturbance to the neighborhood. All the vehicles be parked within the driveway if you had a chance to drive through. It's also a dead-end street with not a lot of traffic there. There will be no changes to the space around the building with any runoff, because there's no change to the existing structure. Therefore, also, given that, you know, the structure is there currently, there's no changes to the aesthetics of the neighborhood, so it should fit in with the neighboring buildings that are there. Additionally, with the use, looking to really just expand my space to work from home. So no changes to the existing space and how it will be used in the future.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the two correspondences that we have, one from Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She tells us on 11/19/2024 that she's reviewed the plan to add office space over the detached garage at this property. The proposed space will not have any bathroom facilities and will not be considered a bedroom. Then we have a note from Nancy Stello, and she lives at 66 Echo, and she tells us on November 8th that she is in favor of the appeal. And that concludes our correspondences. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none, questions from the board? David Veach?
I have no questions.
Ed?
No questions.
I just had one. I know you stated that you weren't going to put any bathrooms, anything like that.
Correct.
Do you have water in there?
Ah, there's an outside water spigot, but nothing interior.
Nothing inside?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
No questions.
No questions.
Steve has no questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
And nor do I.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, deliberations. Ginny?
I think that it's a great project and meets our criteria, not substantially more detrimental. I would support it.
And Steve?
I think it's a good project, way to use some, get some use out of some space. It's a good idea.
Yeah, Lee?
I agree. It's not changing any of the building coverage, nothing exterior is changing. Kind of surprised he's here, but along with that, so if I were voting, I'd totally be in favor.
And Paul?
I don't see it having any effect on the neighborhood, so I will vote in favor.
And David Nixon?
Certainly fine with me.
And Ed?
Agree with the rest of my members here.
And David Veach?
A refreshingly modest proposal before us. I definitely support it.
Now that you've all disclosed your opinions, I will just submit that this is my son-in-law's brother, and I know John, I am not voting, nor do I have any financial interest in this at all. I'm glad that he's going to be warm when he works at home this winter. And with that, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I see that they will have some electrical and insulation people assisting, so I think it makes sense to include the construction activity and vehicles contained on site. So I'll approve the application as submitted with all construction activity and vehicles contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, and thank you for your professional findings.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you. All right, last but not least, 43 Depot Road, 24-125 Elizabeth Kane Tate, care of Larry Broody.
Application number 24-125 Elizabeth Kane Tate, care of Larry Broody, P.O. Box 92, Harwichport, Mass. 02646. Owner of property located at 43 Depot Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 2B Block 30, Lot F5. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and then it is located 14.8 feet from the East Lilyabutter, where 15 feet is required. The proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,259 square feet, 11.2%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,384 square feet, 12.3%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and then it contains 11,247 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Broody, welcome.
Nice to see everybody again.
Have you missed us?
Always.
Did I pronounce that correct?
Yep. Hopefully, this is just as easy as the last one, so.
Yeah, all of them have been pretty swift.
So as you can see, we're proposing a 10-by-17 addition to the rear left corner of the house. First floor will be a mudroom with a sunroom going out to the back deck, and the second floor will be a master bedroom. Exterior finish will be in light kind with what's there now. The whole house will be re-shingled, re-trimmed, and all the windows replaced. So it's, we meet all the dimensional requirements for the addition. Like Sarah said, we're going a 12.3% of lot coverage, so we are not pushing up against the limit too far. Should I do the criteria real quick?
If you please.
Okay. The compatibility of the size, the structure is, you know, similar to that of the existing homes in the neighborhood. We're really just squaring off the back corner. We're not increasing any non-conformities to the property as far as dimensional or coverage. The site's suitable. It doesn't protrude or extend. There's still plenty of room buffering the neighbors in the backyard. No real impact on runoff or anything, the existing grade and all the trees and everything will stay. House has gutters. We'll put gutters back on where we take them off. It's not really impactful of the, you know, visual character of the neighborhood as it's in the backyard and really can't be seen, but it'll be in keeping with the rest of the house. The use remains the same as residential. The septic system on site will stay. No real impact of traffic or flow as we're not adding bedrooms or much use of the house. Trash, noise, litter, all that will be, you know, minimal, and the existing utilities will remain.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? No one's here, and it looks like no one's on Microsoft Team either, so guess not. I will read the correspondences. There are three. One from the Health Department from Judith Giorgio on 11/19/2024. She tells us she's reviewed the plan to renovate and add in addition to this property. It appears that the dwelling will maintain the existing three-bedroom layout by eliminating an existing bedroom on the second floor by converting it to a sitting room that must be passed through to get to the new bedroom addition. The family room on the first floor must have a six-foot cased opening with no doors to meet the requirement of the Board of Health Regulations as a common area. Then we have a note from John Donovan from 67 Country Lane. He tells us on November 14th, 2024, that as in a butter to the subject application, he wishes to extend his support to the submitted appeal. After reviewing the building plans, I believe the completed project will both be an improvement and an enhancement to the existing neighborhood. I am hopeful that the members of the zoning board of appeals will grant the special permit. Then we have a note from Peter Dorhout, 37 Depot Road. This is kind of an awkward one, because it looks, oh, I see. "The Tates have shared the plans of their proposed addition to their property at 43 Depot Road, and we are in support of the work. We think it will be an overall benefit to the neighborhood and add value to their home and surrounding properties." I think that was a form, that's why. I'm not used to that. Okay, in any event, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Nobody being here or on Microsoft Teams. We'll go to questions from the board. Virginia Fenwick?
No questions.
And we'll just go right around?
I have no questions.
I have a quick question. Is it, is it not currently a four-bedroom home?
No, it's a three-bedroom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that is a little confusing. The upstairs, you, when they renovated back in the 80s, they took a bedroom, made it a sitting room, so you walk through that room to get to the back room.
Okay, thank.
And Paul?
Have you had any input from 34 Country Lane, directly behind?
No, the plans have been shared and nobody, it's thickly wooded, but no, I haven't heard from them.
Okay, I have no other questions.
David Nixon?
No questions.
Ed?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I can't remember, is the generator and the AC condensers existing out there?
Yep, that's all existing.
And then I think the other question was for Jay, the proposed basement stairway.
So those are made up of interior-facing retaining walls, which traditionally don't, aren't required to be in a setback?
So right now, I don't know if you went back there, there's like a 15-foot-long concrete ramp that runs down and funnels every drop of rain directly into the basement, and they have a pump set up just for, not if it comes, when it comes in. So we're going to change that, so get rid of the ramp and make it so there's a landing for it to drain.
Okay, thank you.
And David Veach?
Yeah, that was the only question I had, was around those steps, but that's it.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
David Nixon?
Yes.
All votes yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, now deliberations. Paul?
Well, I think it has little or no impact on the neighborhood, given the location of where it's going to be taking place. And I think it improves the house, so I... of where it's going to be taking place, and I think it improves the house, so I have no problem with it.
Ed?
I agree. I think it's a great project. I think it's going to be some great new space, and it meets our criteria.
And Steve?
I think it's a nice project, as long as you intend to, to make the changes that Judy Giorgio.
Yeah, and honestly, they're already made. There's already a six-foot opening, and there's already pasture.
And other than that, I think it's a nice project.
Ginny?
Mr. Broody, I agree with you. You went through the criteria, and I agree that you meet all of it. I think it's a really nice project, so I would support it.
And David Nixon?
There's nothing detrimental at all about this project.
No cupola.
No.
Took it off. Threw it in the trash.
Took it off.
Thank you.
Yeah, it meets our criteria.
And David Veach?
Yeah, I agree with all the previous. I didn't think about this when I looked at that ramp. That was not a very good idea. There was no drainage on the.
There's like a three-inch slit.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, yeah. Not well thought out.
Yeah. No, I will support it.
Okay. Paul?
Well, we're going to hear from the Cupola Association of America, and I know that. Well, I'll, as you know, that area is tight in terms of road, frontage, and so forth. You're working now on Pleasant Street and have been for quite a while. It's difficult to maintain construction vehicles and so forth on-site. Are you able to do that on the?
Yeah, we'll be able to with their driveway and then out front on the grass.
Okay. All right. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicle please contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. I'm not sure that we need any of the other conditions. I don't know whether anybody else feels that there's a need for them, but at least at this point, I don't see a need for any other conditions.
No? Seeing none? Okay.
So Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes?
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
And that's unanimous. Congratulations, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. All right. So a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton, vote yes.
Yep.
David Nixon?
Yes.
And Paul?
All votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
Everybody gets to vote. Yep.
I approve the motion.
All right.
I vote yes.
As do I, and good night, Chatham. And what time is it?
4:09 PM.
Yep. Thank you, and good night.